All right, good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of October 29th. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, in the name of our ancestors.
All right, we have a jam-packed and varied agenda this evening, but before we get into that, Mr. Hale, may I prevail upon you to read the public announcements in upcoming meetings?
Sure. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: The Bylaw Committee, the Cable and Internet Committee, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Recreation Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Subservance Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found at the town website, www.hanson-mass.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The presidential election will be held on November 5th, 2024, at the Hanson Middle School from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Early voting hours will be held at the Hanson Town Hall as follows: Tuesday, October 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Wednesday, October 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Thursday, October 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Friday, November 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. A reminder to all Town of Hanson residents, second quarter fiscal year 2025, real estate and personal property taxes are due on Friday, November 1st, 2024. To make paying taxes more convenient, the Town of Hanson offers the option to pay your taxes online at www.hanson-mass.gov. If payments are mailed, please address to Town of Hanson Treasurer/Collector's Office, 542 Liberty Street, Hanson, Massachusetts, 02341. And the upcoming Select Board meetings are November 12th, November 19th, and December 3rd.
There's one more thing.
Oh, there we go. I'm sorry, there's a big, huge one here. The Town of Hanson Clerk's office will be closed at noon Monday, November 4th, to set up for the polls, closed all day Tuesday, November 5th, for the state election, and closed to the public on Wednesday, November 6th. Thank you, and thank you, Lynn.
And I want to thank our town clerk and all the folks that are working with her. I mean, she is just running a marathon there with the early voting, you know, setting up in-person with the various -- this year has been a whopper of a year for various elections, so good job, everybody. Okay, first up, and this was brought up in Lisa's absence, we had appointed Lisa Green as the records officer for our office, which makes sense, but in her absence, we had never appointed who we would have be the records officer. So Lynn McDowell is Johnny-on-the-spot, and we are thinking that we would like to appoint her as the -- and this is just in Lisa's absence.
So it's an interim?
It's just interim. Whenever Lisa is out, it would be Lynn, and I should mention, in consultation with Lisa while she's on vacation, it's not like, you know, but obviously, we've got timing constraints around a lot of the Freedom of Information Act requests. We don't want to run afoul of those deadlines and turnaround times, so we really do need to have somebody that's an interim.
So moved.
Okay, great. Do I have a second? Okay, great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Great. That brings us to discuss Hanson's updated CCC requirements, and with us this evening is Tony DeFrayers, our town planner, and I'm -- hold on, and Town Council Liz Lyden to talk to us about some changes in the cannabis regulations. So, Mr. DeFrayers, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tony DeFrayers, Town Planner. So as the Select Board's aware, the Cannabis Control Commission has promulgated some new regulations that will affect the host community agreements, and that's going on for roughly about a year-ish, et cetera. So I've worked with Council, we've been waiting on some guidelines, if you will, in the state, and I've worked with Council Liz Lyden to stay up to date and keep Hanson in compliance. So I'm going to let Liz explain to you all the nuances of these new regulations and how they affect Hanson and what, if anything, Hanson needs to do to stay compliant with the law.
So the regulations were promulgated November 9, 2022, I think, 2023, and we knew that they were coming, but we weren't sure of the extent because the statute changed first, so I guess the statutory changed to place in November 2022. Then the regulations were issued about a year ago. And the statute was unclear about what the regulations would state, how restrictive they would be. So we started the process of trying to renegotiate some of the HCAs, but there was still uncertainty. The regulations actually went beyond what we anticipated for restrictions on HCAs. They came up with a model HCA. They changed the whole payment structure around community impact fees so that you could no longer charge a percentage of sales for impact fees, and they can no longer be into the future. It has to be based on documented costs over the prior year. And so essentially, any host community agreements that we already negotiated, once their term expires, it would no longer be able to state what they say now. They would have to be essentially in compliance with the model that was issued or very close to it. The -- there's recent case law that says, and it's not -- it hasn't been appealed, so it's not really final, but has created more uncertainty in the law because it says that the regulations are not retroactive to existing agreements. That means all the agreements that are in place now should still be valid. However, that doesn't help with the uncertainties surrounding payments that we perceive them under the existing agreements because you still have to have documented costs related to the impacts caused by the establishment. Some of the agreements actually say what those could be, and that's helpful. If they don't, then that is still an issue that's open in that case, which is still ongoing and hasn't been finalized. So essentially, all of the existing host community agreements have to be renegotiated at some point or another, and the fees that we collect are only those based on documented costs and can only include impacts directly related to the facilities going forward.
We kind of knew that they were going to lean in this direction. Like, it wasn't as though they took a sharp left and nobody knew that they were leaning in this direction because the CCC kept sort of saying like, "Oh, you better document, and it needs to be real cost and not these hypothetical, and you can't have them just building playgrounds in lieu of," you know, whatever. But, so have we taken a look at when our agreement expired, like, you know, where the rubber meets the road, when our actual agreement expires? And what I think I'm hearing you say is that when our agreement expires, that it will need to very closely mirror whatever that model agreement is?
I don't have the point to have our --
Well, if you guys could just look into that and circle back with us, that would be awesome.
Essentially, when it expires, the CCC will issue a notice or upon renewal, and then the establishment will reach out to us and ask for an agreement, and I have plenty of models that we can use.
And I just, you know, at the risk of stating the obvious, to me, it's super frustrating that we were sold a bill of goods, right? Because the town thought, well, you know, in consideration for us allowing somebody to come in with the growth facility in our particular case, we were going to get certain amounts of money, and then the rules are changed midstream, like, just completely changed midstream, with, as far as I can tell, very little ability for voters or the people impacted or the towns impacted to even influence what ended up happening. Of course, yes, could we have gone to CCC meetings and tried to effectuate some difference there, but it does seem like they sort of had a path that they were going down. You know, it's really disappointing to see the state take that approach. I mean, I don't know what you guys think, but, you know.
Definitely.
You know, because I don't know that as a town, we would have been as favorable about it if we didn't think that we were going to get, you know, some kind of renumeration about it. So what, are you recommending that we make any change now, or are you?
I am, so not with the host community agreement, although that will have to occur at some point. The one thing I will say is that these are still discretionary. There's case law to that effect, and also the regulations, the one tidbit that they kind of threw to municipalities is you can elect not to continue relations with marijuana establishment if it's not in your best interest. I have not seen that happen yet, but it is an option. The other piece of the regulations that were recently promulgated is that there is now, so you have to have a social equity policy in place, and what that means is you have to have a policy to prioritize social equity applicants, which are historically dis -- I don't know what the word would be, but applicants who have historically been disenfranchised, you know, they suffered from the war on drugs, either they're minority-owned women-owned businesses, or they've been arrested for marijuana or something to that effect. And so what the town is now required to do is have a social equity policy in place whereby you are required to adopt a policy. That policy has to include streamlining the application process for these applicants, providing all of the materials on the town's website, including permitting requirements, a contact person, what the process is to get a host community agreement, permitting for zoning, building permits. All the applications have to be easily accessible, and then when you do decide to issue a new HCA, you have to have kind of an application process that's transparent and post your decisions, post your statistics about how many establishments you have in the town, how many of them are social equity applicants. That should have been done already under the law, but they are not enforcing it until May of this year, and so there isn't any fines or penalties until May, so you still have time.
Can we just back up the truck here? Are you talking about compliance with everything you just said about the streamlining of the application process, et cetera, et cetera, by May of next year?
Yeah, having a policy in place.
Okay, okay, all right. Two, okay, and what about the rest of all of that?
So, once you have that policy in place, then you have to start going forward and implementing the policy. You also have to meet one of the requirements under the regulations regarding, so there's three options that the town can take to move forward. One is to adopt an ordinance or bylaw to exclusively permit social equity businesses for three years, or until the goals of the exclusivity period have been met. Two, adopt the model bylaw or ordinance created by the commission to permit social equity businesses. And three, which is the easiest option and doesn't require a town meeting vote, creating a local approval process, which is required by the regulations anyway, for equity applicants that is administered on a one-to-one basis. So if you have a new license available for an HCA in town, you would issue it to a social equity applicant on a one-to-one basis with a general applicant until you have 50% of social equity businesses.
All right, this is a lot to unpack, but what I'm hearing you say is we're getting no more money, but we're being asked to do a lot more regarding this type of business.
Not that you're not getting any more money. If you have retail establishments in town?
We don't.
Okay. If you were to allow for retail in town, you would still get 3%?
I don't see that floating. It's been tried several times, and we've gotten a pretty strong message on that.
I actually know that.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't see that floating, and I don't see us trying that again. I mean, it's funny because in my mind, I'm going like, why would we even want to allow any kind of cannabis? Like, if these requirements are there, and again, it's an unfunded mandate, we're not being given any support by the state to do this, why would we?
My thought is we just do what we've done up until this point and take it to a town meeting for option either one or two, and see if the town wants to do anything with this, because we've gone into town meetings before thinking they were going to go this way, and they went that way. Then we thought they were going to go this way, and then they went that way. The town really needs to have a say in this.
Well, can you define what you're saying, a say in what?
No, just every time, like, whenever we've gone through this process over the years, we've thought that, you know, we thought the town might be for a certain type of establishment, and they weren't. And we thought they wouldn't be for a certain type of establishment or zoning, and that they were. So I do think that this just falls into the same thing of being consistent and just let the town.
So do you guys want to think about going back and saying, do we want to still allow marijuana facility in town? I mean, you're saying that we can say that we're not interested in having, I don't know what that looks like, it sounds catastrophic and like it's like we're waiting for a lawsuit, but, you know, and I don't know that we want to do, you know, that, like, the particular businesses here, you know, they've been, they've complied, it's not as though, you know, they haven't complied, they're following what they're required to do. It's through no fault of theirs that we're getting in this position, but I guess, you know, you're saying it's the policy itself that we're required to have in place?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't mean you have to allow for additional marijuana establishments at all. You can say we're not allowing any at this time.
I think, yeah.
I mean, this does seem like an un--
All right, well, we don't need to make that decision tonight, but I hear what you're saying, yeah. It seems like a lot for a little town like ours with very few resources to take on, and it sounds like it's just volumes of paperwork and streamlining and, you know, it's like, great, are you going to give us an IT person and, you know?
And there's no, there's no real assistance there is to the applicants, but there really is no assistance to municipalities. And I've been, there's also a lot of turnover in the CCC, and I've been fighting with them every step of the way to try and get some say in how this goes and what the HCAs say, and even that has been not filled out, and it has not been easy, and every time I make some leeway, there's turnover, and that person doesn't know what the other person did or what was allowed and what wasn't. It's been very difficult.
So if we were to say that we don't want to allow any more businesses in town because we just don't have the infrastructure to support all of the, you know, having like a white-glove concierge service for anybody who applies, and, which we'd love to have for frankly, any business that wants to come to town. I mean, Tony and I are doing the Economic Development Committee, I'd love to have that person, we just simply don't have the resources. So are you saying that if we adopt the policy, that as part of the policy, we could say we don't want, like, or?
So you would adopt the policy, if you want to actually say as a town, you don't want any more marijuana and you just want the one license, you can limit it at town meeting?
Okay, so that's what we'd do?
That's what I was talking about, yeah, that was one of the three options.
I wouldn't recommend saying to the existing establishment, we don't want to work--
I don't think we're going to do that anyway, I was just throwing that out there hypothetically, yeah.
But also, if somebody applies, it's still at your discretion if you want to award another HCA. That is in the Select Board's hands. So you can make the decision that you're holding off right now, and if you do award, the other way to comply is to make a policy as a Select Board and say, going forward, we will issue, if we have any new applications available, it will be awarded to a social equity business, and that's our policy going forward. And so, and that would be in compliance with the statute.
Now, if we have two businesses that, you know, on their face are completely comparable, are we required, if, say, we're, and say we decide, these are our hypotheticals, but say we decided as a town, we're going to only, we're only going to allow one more establishment, we're required to give that to the social equity? Okay, okay.
But you'd have to adopt the policy first so that nobody could come back and say, you know, you didn't award it to me, but you awarded it to them, and, you know, that wasn't fair.
And we're not, this is not optional?
No.
And what happens if we don't adopt any policy?
You could, if they report you, so if you have an applicant who's a social equity business and they report you to the CCC, then the town may be subject to fines, starting in May.
Okay, all right.
Is there a timeline, like, once, if the town adopts the policy, is there a timeline that they have to implement the steps?
So I, I think, so you have to have the policy in effect, you know, as of last July, so the policy should be first, the one that we presented to you. And then I would also just adopt the policy to meet the next criteria of the regulations, which would just be the Select Board moves to approve a policy whereby we will allow social equity applicants on a one-to-one ratio to general applicants until such time as 50% of our HCAs are social equity applicants. That would be probably step two, and then you would work to get all of that information on the website. If you have the policy, if you adopt the policy and post that on the website for now, I think that would actually buy you a little bit of time until you can get all the application materials together and put that on the website. I can certainly assist with what that would look like, and once you have everything up there, I mean, you're in compliance.
Do you have any towns that have already complied with all of this that we could plagiarize from?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. So maybe if you can talk to Tony and provide him with some of those towns, that would be great. And I think for this board, if we could have sort of like actionable items like this, this, this with deadlines, because this is a lot of conceptual information.
It's just a preliminary information dump.
Right. Well, my mind is blown, and this is a lot. So, yeah, if we could just have like your suggested prioritization and then deadlines for complying with the various moving parts, I think that would help kind of guide us and keep us, you know, moving forward. Did anybody have any questions?
No. Do all the other towns have this policy in place?
No, no, I mean, I--
Like Halifax, they have retail that they sell.
I know that they do not.
They don't?
And there's a lot of towns that don't yet, because as of right now, even if you're out of compliance, there's no penalty yet.
They haven't really taken enforcement actions against anybody.
Exactly, and they will pursuant to the statute, they really can't until May. They can remind you, like, hey, you need to get in compliance with this, you're out of compliance, but they can't penalize you until May.
Okay.
To me, this seems like a big-- Is there like a town around that has that in place, or are we?
Yeah.
Because picking Hanson is just like, we're the lucky town that can put this in place.
I can follow up with a lot of the towns that I've already, I've basically structured a website for some towns.
Okay.
And said, this is what it should look like, and then I assume that they have--
We have a template to go, we have a template to go by, it might be a lot easier to put in place.
Yes, it would. I don't think we want to start from scratch trying to figure this out.
I think having Council assist us would be a big help.
Okay, of course, that always comes down to, and no offense intended, where are we going to get that money from? So we'll have to take a look at that, but it's good to know that you've got--
It shouldn't be a heavy lift.
Okay, yeah.
It should be a little turnover, and I already sent a policy for you to look at.
That you have, you should--
Yes, yeah.
And so you can look at that and see if you have any changes to it or you want to adopt it, and that would be step one.
Okay, all right, that sounds great. So if you don't mind putting together, you know, kind of like a suggested project plan with deadlines kind of things and steps that need to be taken, and then if you can kind of cross-pollinate with her and get some of the towns, so, and maybe that might be a good thing to have Lisa send to us so we can kind of get a sense of what we're talking about, what does it need to look like, what does it need to be packaged like, and then we'll take up an actual vote on the policy at a future meeting. I just want everybody to have a little bit of time to think about it and process it. And similarly, if you can get back to us with, you know, how many other towns have already, you know, are in compliance and, you know, sort of like the State of the Union with respect to that.
It will be hard to figure that out, but I can at least pull on these towns.
Yes, yes, fair enough, I get that, yeah. I know the universe is much bigger than your client list, but yeah, if you can even just do that, that would be great, yeah. Yes, Mr. Hale?
I, this is just extremely concerning to me. This just seems like a huge, huge slippery slope, where we just, we're in the middle of the MBTA slippery slope, and it's like, wow, we're going to, they're going to make us approve permits for these people to do--
No, 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 they're not going to make us approve permits. What she's saying is we have to have a policy saying if we allow any more, and that's where Mr. Week's suggestion is let town meeting decide whether they want us to allow any more.
That's right, 100%, because this is, this is, this is the state going above and beyond, yet again, forcing us to do something.
It does feel like Groundhog Day a bit here, over and over again.
It does, where they're forcing us to do something that we don't want to do, and--
Maybe, maybe don't want, this is my biggest thing, just to piggyback off that. Because I've been surprised at town meeting in the various ways, because we all represent everybody, I don't know what the town wants in this regard. And my, my consumer protection piece around this is, I'm kind of a layman to some of this stuff, but my time being on the planning board in zoning enforcement types of committees, a policy for the most part just means if somebody does present it to you, in my experience, it means you have to accept them. So I just kind of want like an ironclad description, because I agree with what you're saying in terms of action steps, but I kind of want to know the what-if types of things, like, if you, this is going to be, I'm not looking for this particular type of walkthrough on it, but I would like to be like, if you actuate this, a yes vote means this and a no vote means this, because I've come before, like, someone will present something in planning years ago, and it's like, well, I don't like the way this looks, and it's like, yeah, but legally, you can't tell them no. So it might look like, it might sound like a one-to-one, but in actuality, I just don't want to get caught in a situation where 10 people decide to fly all at once, and then I have all of these things that the town, in town meeting, said they don't want their town to look like this, but I accidentally stepped in it, and now I'm allowing X, Y, and Z into town, almost like, you know, you know, store for store with Dunkin' Donuts.
I agree with you, and I've also already found a flaw in the regulations that they essentially say, and a social equity applicant must receive approval--
Yeah.
--before you can award an HCA to another applicant.
Yeah.
And that approval means all of their approvals. So if they apply for zoning--
Yeah.
Or if they get an HCA and then sit on it for five years, they never get their zoning approval--
Yeah.
What does that mean? Can you not issue an HCA for five years? And I've requested clarification in the CCC and followed up with them, and I have not received any.
Yeah, see, my mind goes exactly there, and I'm thinking to myself, like, who sits with the liability? So if this person does this, and they've gone through it, and we're like, all right, you're already done, and this person decides to sue us because they feel like what we did was favor these people or misinterpreted something in the process, and now, again, the likelihood of it slim, don't get me wrong, but I always come from like a risk-averse place, and I don't want to be the first person that starts the case study on this, you know, 10 years down the road, yeah.
Well, this is exactly what the CCC--
Yeah, so I appreciate you working with us on this, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. I have to figure out where the town actually wants something like this, and then it'll give me a place to work from. I feel like I have too many questions up in the air at this point to really feel comfortable.
Yes, Mr. DeFrayers.
So if I'm understanding, Hanson can adopt the policy, but then also state, we're only going to have one license. going to have one license, and we're not going to allow you more, and still be compliant as a business?
Yes, so if the town goes to town meeting and says, we want to either not allow any more marijuana establishments period, or limit it to what is in the statute, like.
Right, you just want a policy in place, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the big deal? Put a policy in place.
We can, we can, we're the ones who can vote that.
Yeah.
So, but, but.
This is why I would say no to that, honestly, this is why, just to answer that question, because we're, we're literally living it right now, so we already put a policy in place, and then here we are, five years later, that policy doesn't matter, I'm gonna force you to do something else.
We didn't put a policy in place, we put a host community agreement in place.
Oh, I understand that, but we've taken, we've, we've zoned for marijuana establishments, we've taken votes at town meeting for these things, we went in there with very specific understanding of what we were getting into, and now are being told that that stuff.
Yeah, it's questionable, and so, if, let's say that we, to, to Mr. George's point, we adopt the policy, and a non-social equity, you know, company applies, but we don't have any social equity company applied, but we, let's say town meeting hypothetically says, we'll allow one more license in town, I'm just, you know, painting this picture.
And you have to say, we are reserving our existing license for.
So it has to be a social equity.
It has to.
It has to be.
That's what this says, yeah.
You can't have, a, a, a white male cannot start a cannabis company.
Well, maybe let's not get quite.
I, well, that's, that's, that's what it, that's, that is what it is saying, though.
They can, because.
What do you mean, it can?
They can.
If he was arrested for marijuana.
Yeah, then he's, then he's part of the definition of.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta read the definition.
Or if he partners with somebody else.
Or he can be partnered with a woman, a woman, business owner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, and I just wonder, yeah.
It allows for people who may have been on the other side of the law, when it wasn't legal.
Yeah.
To now speak in business.
You say, may have been on the other side of law, but it almost seems like.
No, like, if you got hit for marijuana, you arrested for marijuana, you're in prison, now you have an opportunity to have start a business.
Yes.
Right, but that's the one that gets the business, somebody like me, or you, or, or even you, wouldn't be able to start a marijuana business.
Well, I'm a woman.
Is that social equity?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I think, I think you can put it in a nutshell, sort of, you have the policy in place, but once you have it in place, doesn't mean that you have to allow any more. And I think that's what Joe's saying when you go to town meeting.
Yes, 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 yes.
So if you go to town meeting, and town meeting says, we have one, we're good.
Yep.
The policy's in place, we comply.
Yes, that's, that's, okay, that's exactly, yeah.
So now, if, if you don't have a policy in place, and someone files a complaint against you after May, and here comes, they hire an attorney, and they're gonna sue us, and so you can have the policy in place, and go to town meeting, and if town meeting says, ah, one's good, we're all set.
However, there's also existing case law that says that HCA's are discretionary, so even if you didn't have the policy in place, and someone applied, you could say, we're not taking any new applicants at this time.
Okay, but, so to Tony's point, and Mr. George's and Mr. Weeks', to me, sequentially, the project plan would be, adopt a policy, go to town meeting, and get a pulse check on what people want you to do, to, right?
I mean, I think so, as long as this policy doesn't make us inadvertently step in it and accept, like, 50 of them.
No.
Whenever they come through.
Never happen, because, well, you have zoning in place already, the zoning stays in place until you either rescind it or eliminate all marijuana in town.
Yeah, as long as it's truly like an approval-based system, I don't expect anybody, like, if we put a policy, and I'm not expecting 50 people to come in, I just use that as an extreme, obviously, I just want to make sure, just like with anything else, this policy doesn't make it so that somehow, it's an automatic yes, and we really can't say no.
The policy does not require you to accept any applications.
Okay.
It just says, if you do, it has to be a social equity applicant.
Okay, all right, okay, so it's an if, it's not a, you don't anticipate it being a must, we have to do this.
And then, but I do like, and then double check, do people want us to have any more businesses, you know?
And I think the zoning, the only area right now is the industrial.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's somewhat self-limiting, since you can only do it down in that area anyway. Okay, did anybody have any other questions about this? Okay, all right, so we'll take it up and, and figure out, but if you can get us that punch list, that'd be amazing. All right, thank you, Liz, great to have you, and thanks for, thanks for educating us. Mind blown, okay, all right, that brings us to Zero West Washington Street update and discussion, Mr. DeFrase.
Chair. Just put up the, and then Mr. Weeks loves our forum, so it's gonna be a quick one.
Do you like those 10 slides or less? There you go.
So, seven slides. So, Zero West Washington Street, which is known as MAP 67, lot 17-14, this is property that's adjacent to the existing, where the water department is, and the industrial park. So, we received a mass development one-stop grant last year, and to take a look at this site, it's a town-owned site, it's a, it was approximately 7 acres, so we were awarded a grant for $98,826, and through Mass Development. Mass Development had what they call their in-house doctors, which are basically vetted companies, engineering companies, that they work with the state. So, what happens here is the, the state enters into an agreement with VHB, and what VHB is gonna do for Hanson is look at this site, and look at the resource area, AKA wetlands, and what impacts that has to the site, and what could this site yield as far as a building or buildings. So, we're working with VHB, they've been out there, and they've done some survey work, they've established, they've reestablished the wetland line, and if you go on GIS, on the town's website, you'll see there's a resource area sort of through here. GIS is, when it comes to that stuff, is not particularly accurate, so it usually tends to be a lodger. So, based on the location of those, that resource area, they've come up with some concepts. So, the zone, so the zoning requirements, this particular site is in a commercial industrial district, so for that area, 44,000 square feet is the area required for the lot, 39,600 square feet of upland is required, which is 90% of the lot size. A portion, a good portion of this lot falls within our Zone 210 Protection District, so when it comes to business or industrial, it, it has to be, it cannot be a manufacturer that processes, stores, or disposes of hazardous waste, material wastes. Any type of thing going forward here is gonna require a site plan, which goes to the zoning board of appeals. Maximum, minimum lot frontage is 200, front, uh, front setback is 50, side and rear is 25, max lot coverage, which includes structures and parking, is 60%, includes all paved areas, maximum building coverage is 15%. Under the Towns Wetland Bylaw, there's a 50-foot no disturb for single-family homes, multiple dwelling structures, and commercial industrial structures, and a 95-foot no disturb area for paved areas and asphalt, adjacent to the wetland. So, the next slide is, so, it's a breakdown here of the site in a layer. First, the top layer will show you the edge of the wetland, along with the buffer. The second layer is, there is a water main that goes through that site, so there wouldn't be anything as far as structures that can be built on top of that. Third layer shows the setbacks, the 50-foot and 25-foot all around, and then the last layer shows the, the wetland enclosure. So, considering the required setbacks of 95 feet, the site's buildable envelope is about 1.6 acres out of those 7 acres site. If you just follow the 50-foot setbacks, you would have 2.33 acres. Based on all that, VHB had come up with two concepts.
So, excuse, excuse me, Mr. DeFrase, to do the 50, conservation would have to weigh in on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Up to 100, yeah.
So, the first concept is a meeting, is being, is being in compliance with the max lot coverage, the building coverage, the, all the setbacks, parking spaces, and loading requirements. And so, what you have is a building that is 25,000 square feet, which is a good-sized building.
Yeah.
A commercial industrial zone.
Yeah.
So, they depict a entranceway, here's the easement that's being discussed with the water main, the entrance would sidesaddle that easement, and then come across with some parking and some loading areas. The 5,000 square feet you see here is a general size for a detention base. This area shaded is the existing wetland line, the outside line here is a 50-foot, and this one's the 100-foot.
All right, I see, so it's, it's, we're slicing it thin there, yeah.
Yeah, so, even with all that, we can get a building on there that's about $25,000 square feet.
That's not insignificant.
No, it's not, because either, if you have, let's say, one tenant that utilizes the 25,000 square feet, or if not, and, for instance, this building down here, which is in the industrial park, it's a similar-sized building, but it's been what they call condoed out, so there's multiple units in that building, so smaller businesses are occupying one large building. You'll also notice here, this is the existing water department site. If, because that's also town-owned property, if the water department decided to, let's say, relocate for some reason, and that site became available, then they came up with a concept, again, still in compliance of a 30,000-square-foot, a potential 30,000-square-foot building on that site, so you'd have a total of about 55,000 square feet of commercial industrial space available.
And that's purely hypothetical, we're really focusing mostly on the piece of property that doesn't house the water department.
Correct.
I just don't want people losing their mind, thinking that we're kicking the water department out, or.
Yeah, exactly, the whole idea is, this is the main concept. So, the next steps here is, you know, is looking for a blessing, in essence, from the select board, because we want to continue to move forward to come up with some preliminary plans, something that, if and when the town makes a decision to, let's say, maybe market this property, this is something that can be shown to potential buyers, here's, here's where the wetland line is, here's where the building could go, here's the drainage, something that's marketable. Because if this was to be moved on, obviously, the town would have additional business, resource, revenue, and revenue that could probably be used towards closing.
Now, are we gonna take that extra step to go to conservation and have that conversation so that that's part of the package that we've already got?
Thanks to the plan, yes.
Okay, yeah, so if you guys will recall, excellent work, Tony, I mean, sincerely excellent work, if you will recall, one of the things we had discussed was, what town-owned property do we have that we might be able to sell or lease for some additional revenue, and what can we do to incentivize businesses to locate to Hanson?
And that's what.
And this kind of does all of that, really, you know, and one of the pieces of feedback that we got, had gotten from people was like, look, the town should get their act together and do the permitting before you sell it, because developers are buying it for a song and a dance, and then they're just doing the permitting, flipping it around, and turning it to somebody else after they go through conservation planning, da-da-da-da-da. So Tony has effectively done all of those steps, except for conservation, and, and then we decide what, whether we want to sell it, develop it, whatever, you know, what do you guys think?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept it, contingent upon the land use boards approving, approving it in their respective committees.
Any further discussion? Okay, so anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Amazing.
We're gonna give her, I, I appreciate, I mean, the good thing is, we've been able to do all this.
Great, it's even better.
So, you know.
You got it in before the end of the year?
Yeah, we're, we're, as far as I know, we're safe there.
Okay.
Is this the money that needs to be paid back if we sell it?
So that, that is the caveat, yes, so, under, under this grant, if it goes, if we sell it on, obviously, we have a grant that's, let's say, $99,000.
Yeah.
We would have to sell it, obviously, for more than that, because we have to pay back that grant, but I think if we can get it to a point where it's permitted or pretty close to it, it just makes it that much more marketable, and the town can move on, and that revenue, you can use, again, close the financial gap that the town has.
Yeah.
Help, gets us a business, and if you combo the building out, it can get you more than one business.
Yeah.
Great.
Awesome.
And, yeah, so, just so you know, the material source was Hanson's only Bylaw, Hanson's only Bylaw, and part of that information, the slide, the concepts, was a slide presentation that was prepared by.
On the next property.
Well, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say this, we, and then I'll be finished, is, I applied for eight one-stop grants, we did receive two.
That's great.
Uh, one is, we did receive two, now the big question is, Jay, do I first?
Well, did we receive, which a lot of the non-compliant, the non-compliant MBTA community towns have been receiving letters, good news, you received a grant, bad news, if you're not compliant by the end of the year, you're not going to get it.
Yes, we did, we did receive that, one of the grants is for $70,000, and it's for 212 Industrial Boulevard, which is the last town-owned property in the industrial park to do literally the same thing that we're doing here.
You guys know where that is, it's the other end, you know, where highway, put some stuff, and, yeah.
The, the good news is, I'm actually going to be, have a kickoff meeting with Mass Development to talk about the project, but, fingers crossed, the SJC comes back with something in our favor, if you will, before the end of the year. If not, then yes, that grant and the other second one will not be given to us, and a total, the total between the two is just over $300,000.
That'll be a, a real bummer, good work getting the grants, but.
Yeah, I was a little disappointed, it, it was great to get two, you wonder about the other ones, did we not get it because the projects just weren't attractive enough for the grants, or was there something else? Who knows?
Yeah.
You know, but at least we did get two, we didn't get zero, so two's better than zero.
Definitely.
Yeah, awesome, that's great.
You know we're huge fans, keep up the good work, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, that brings us to treasure collector update. Ms. Clark, thank you for joining us.
No presentation, sorry.
That, oh, no, no apologies, we're thrilled to, to have you here, and we hope you're gonna be sharing good news with us.
Well, I have some, yes. So I maximized the town's funds by investing and purchasing CDs. For FY '24, the total for the interest was $374,646, which is increasing receipts for the end of the fiscal year, from previous fiscal year of $147,000.
Wow, wow.
So I was very happy about that.
Well done.
You know, it's all, the interest rate, obviously, is high, but I wanted to buy those CDs before any drop, and I did get a couple for General Fund. As of September 30th is when I put this together, General Fund interest collected was $145,605, and for CPA, FY '24, I received in interest $34,363. And as far as, right now, is September 30th for CPA, $133,155.
Wow.
So, the investment has paid off so far, so, you know, the market, how it is, and hopefully it stays good, it looks like today the Dow was up, Dow was up, so that was very encouraging. I also increased the collection process by sending past due real estate, personal property bills to the deputy collector, which, it just is an added collection process before any tax-taking process. So, after that, after I sent to the deputy, I did do start the fiscal year '22 and '23 tax-taking, because you don't want those years to sit, it's not good for us, like we're, you know, have unpaid or uncollected receipts, and I've also, will finalize FY ' '24 tax-taking on October 31st. Now, as you know, there's new rules coming into place, the state, once again, is making our lives a little more difficult, which that will start on November 1st. The whole tax-taking procedure is just been, like that presentation we had earlier, tenfold, more difficult for closures, any kind of procedure is just not something that we're gonna want to do.
No, I, yeah, and we've, we, so we had had a couple properties in town that are in a rapid state of disrepair and have been abandoned.
Yeah.
And we were aggressively pursuing, trying to do something, and then with the court cases that were coming out, basically saying, like. basically saying like, wow, you could do that, but you've got to give people the money, you know, that they're due. It's like, well, why would the town take on that liability, do all this work, sell it, package it up, do the mitigation and whatever, and then somebody else is gonna reap the rewards? And we're not necessarily able to get like legal fees and all the others, you know, they're very, very persnickety about what we're able to get back and we've got a document, so yeah, I.
It's going to be very difficult. You, there are steps that are going to be added if you do a foreclosure sale. Um, right now, you'd have to decide within two weeks whether the town is gonna keep the property or the town is gonna sell the property and then you have to get a realtor and you have to put all the money upfront. The town would have to pay for all this, um, pay out the equity that the person is owed, um, even though we don't really know what we're going to get for the property. Um, so that is if we were keeping it.
Yeah.
Um, so, and then if we decided to sell it, then it's a whole other, we have to use a realtor and if that doesn't go through, we don't make enough money, then we have to do, uh, like we do now, an auction. Uh, so it's a whole, and there's a whole different way of, um, notifying, we have to, um, certified mail everybody and we have to let them know in multiple languages, um, what, what is happening, um, service to the door, which I do now with the deputy collector, but we'll have to do again if we, and once we do on the tax title. So my best, um, thing to do was to get tax title done prior to November first.
Yes, yeah.
So I worked very diligently on that. Um, and in doing so, um, last year, June thirtieth, we had outstanding for twenty-two, twenty-four and twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, four-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, and I collected two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars of that, putting a hundred and thirty-seven four ninety-six into tax title.
Wow.
So I was very, you know, um, we worked very hard, the office, the staff was excellent in helping to get this done. Um, because it is a time-consuming process, but this Thursday we'll have all those three years into tax title for unpaid.
That's amazing, and I noticed that you had stuff in the paper, which, uh, for the years that I've been here, I don't ever remember.
You have to put it in the.
I don't remember, it may have been put in papers, but I don't remember at least seeing the express.
That is actually one good change in the law that's gonna come through. You won't have to put them in the paper, you have to put it on the website. Uh, but the bad side of the new change is they're decreasing the interest on tax title.
Oh.
It's gonna be lower than what we charge for basically unpaid taxes. Right now it's fourteen percent, tax title was sixteen percent as of November first, it's going down eight percent.
Who makes these decisions, like?
The states.
Like what the, I mean, no, let's charge less, because nobody needs more money.
Right, and they put more burden on the town for the processes of trying to collect the money. So it's like what we talked about earlier, it's more burden on us and less on the non-paid taxpayers. So thus is the reason why, once I put those in before November first, they'll always be sixteen percent, even the subsequent. Anything after that date, if put into tax title, it drops.
Oh, I've got you. So if you didn't pull the trigger before November first, then you're subject to these new rules. Oh, well, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was, um, I was told I wasn't very nice, but that's my job to make, you know, make sure the taxes are paid. Um, so I also worked with the assessors, um, office prior to the end of fiscal twenty-four to remove uncollected personal property and motor vehicle taxes from our outstanding list. This process removes outstanding balances, which is a negative effect of our credit rating. So we had, um, personal property, I want to say it was back to two thousand and eleven, of uncollectible. And it just sits on our books, um, and every year you have to, the assessors office has to hold that money in overlay. Um, so once it's done, it's a hit on the overlay the first year, but the remainder of the year, it's not there. So I, we did up to twenty-twenty for both motor vehicle and personal property. Personal property is hard to collect, obviously there's no teeth in the law. Uh, but motor vehicle, we can still collect, even though we stay debated, they're still at the deputy collector, we can still retrieve the money. If that happens, we just, we just process it as a treasure receipt. Um, so that's all I have, I just, other than to thank my staff for their hard work and their self-reliance and, um, so I'm extremely lucky to be in this town and thank you for hiring me and, um, working with such great people.
Well, we feel very fortunate to have you and yes, we thank your staff and we thank you with your leadership. Um, you've really accomplished a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jordan.
Yep.
Good job.
Thanks.
Alright. Alright, we're on the good news train tonight, well, kinda.
Yeah, we, well, thank you for the good news, we needed it.
The local stuff is good, the state stuff is not, but, um, so that brings us to, um, the use of Hawks Ave for cold storage. Um, and with us this evening, we have our, uh, fire chief, um, O'Brien and we have our highway director, um, Rich Jasmine. So thank you for taking the inquisition chairs, gentlemen. Uh, we're thrilled to have you and thank you for sitting through all of that discussion. Um, so, uh, cold storage at Hawks Ave, AKA the old light control. Um, what say you?
Well, so the smaller of the two buildings that are there, um, over the last month or so, we've gone up and taken a look at it. Um, actually when Rich, you weren't even here a week, were you, when we could go with it? Yeah, so he actually, um, they went up and cleaned out the area for us because a lot of it had become overgrown. And when we looked at the building, um, it's weather tight as far as being waterproof and things like that. Um, and I sent, uh, uh, a, uh, we should have a letter attached to it, Pat, it's. And Rich and I and Chief Mex and Charlie Baker all got together and came up with kind of a policy, if you guys agree with it, um, as far as what would be stored up there. It's mainly police, fire and highway, it would be for the one-offs. So Santa Claus needs a place to hide every once in a while, so, uh, it'd be for things like that. But things such as the signboards, um, for the winter would go up there, uh, any of the, uh, lawn mowers, trailers, because there's a lot of trailers in towns, things like that, um, the lighting plants to go in there in the winter. And then the summer months, um, it'd be more for, um, highway, but to be able to put the Plows and Sanders and things like that in there. Um, to basically get stuff out of the elements, because as I'm sure everybody's aware, we've got to put a lot of stuff outside between the three departments, um, right now. The one thing with vehicles, we all agree that we're not gonna use it for vehicle storage unless we really have it. Like for, we know the four feet of snow is coming, we'll get the vehicles out of town hall here, we can put them down there, things like that. Uh, with vehicles, they would have to have batteries disconnected and we would put drip cans under them, just because we know we are in a conservation area.
I love it.
Next door.
Yep.
So we're trying to be proactive with that, uh, to do all that, so that's.
So that would be good, so that, so, so we keep the, the, uh, vehicles out of the elements and then, um, probably free up some space in each of your respective locations, so you're able to actually see what else is going on here. Um, I mean, does it, um, what is our cost, um, is there any like costs, like electrical, da-da-da, alarms?
Electrification, the building whatsoever right now, um, the area's already been cleaned up, thank you to the highway department for doing that. Uh, Charlie Baker and I did talk that he's looking to put up, um, solar-powered cameras there, so that we do have security, um, on it. So that's a big thing, we'll probably look at getting some solar-powered lights. Neither one of them are big costs, so between the police, fire and highway, we'll, we'll figure it out with Charlie.
I think Charlie told me he thought it was going to be less than two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, for various components of what needed to be done. Did you have a question?
That's for the cameras, two thousand dollars?
Everything.
Lights.
Security, camera, like locks.
Are you thinking like, like satellite cameras or how are these cameras?
They're probably maybe not wanting to get into that level of detail.
And I, and I'll, I'll be honest, that's more like Charlie, please, question for that one. And the good thing with this too is being able to store some emergency management stuff in it, um, allowed to then through the state and fed, supply for emergency management funding for different things to offset the cost.
That would be amazing. You know, we, we love our grants.
I agree, we do love the grants, yes.
Um, and, okay, so did anybody have any questions?
Just as long as it's like, as vandal-proof as you feel it can be, that's the number one thing. So, I, I don't want to go into details, because I do appreciate those questions, but I think the minute you tell somebody and broadcast it, they gotta know what they're dealing with. So I, uh, from your standpoints, everything is where it needs to be? You have enough resources, because I'd rather make sure we give you what you need versus anything else. So you feel like you have what you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want you guys feeling like you've got to do it on the cheap and then, you know, we.
No, and I'm sure if we get into it, you know, power and things like that, we can look at in the future, we just want to at least establish how it is and then if, if, if it needs to roll, whatever.
I'm glad to see the buildings actually get some use for Pete's sake, we've had them for so long and, you know.
This is just one building.
It's the, yes, it's the smaller of the buildings. Well, the right, you know, the, the right.
Did you have any questions?
So what do we need to do to move?
We're just gonna vote to approve them using it for cold storage.
And tomorrow they'll move in.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as they, they feel like they're right, there's some preliminary little footwork they're gonna do, but, yeah. Um, Charlie said you're gonna do some pest management stuff, just make, he said there, it was actually in pretty good shape and, yeah.
It's phenomenal shape, we're actually impressed with how.
Very, very glad that it'll be.
Yes.
Used and not abused.
So I'll throw, uh, I'll do both in one motion unless you want me to break it up into two, but I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the use for cold storage and to approve the policy that you've, uh, outlined for us.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Great. Alright, thank you, I love the collaboration, it's awesome. Yep.
Kaymore, thank you.
Yes. Alright, um, eleven-thirty-nine Main Street easement discussion, it's not really a discussion, it's, um, we had already, um, voted on at town meeting, um, and so, um, Lynn just needs us to sign it, so.
Okay.
She's just gonna pass that around. Um, and then we've got, um, except Richard Bakarian's resignation from the Hanson Police Department, I will entertain a motion.
So moved with regret. Yeah, second with regrets.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, except Julia Nees' resignation from the Hanson Public Library.
So moved with regret, and I'm accepting it, I'll second it with regrets.
Okay, all in favor? Great. And then approve meeting minutes, September twenty-fourth, October seventh, October fifteenth and October twenty-second, and these are open session min- minutes.
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor? Great. And checking right along here, one-day liquor license, eleven-three twenty-four for Pamela Bumpus birthday party, eight-twenty-three twenty-five for Charles All wedding and ten-oh-four twenty-five for Kyle Fink wedding. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? And, um, does anybody have any, um, burning desire to give us a committee update on anything?
Nope.
Okay, um, then that brings us to, um, and since we don't have Lisa here, we don't have a town administrator report. That brings us to adjournment, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Um, and we are adjourning in executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares litigation discussions and executive session pursuant, pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A seven, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. I will entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 And we will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much.